Good evening, El Segundo. We are conducting this evening's meeting on November 3rd, 2020. In a virtual setting, council members and staff are participating from remote locations. And Deputy City Clerk Mona Shilling is in chamber to accommodate public communication. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live this evening on Spectrum Channel 3 and 22, or AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, also elsegundoTV at youtube.com. Please remember to mute your mics when not speaking, and council members if making a motion or a second, please do so using your last name in order for the clerk to hear and report correctly. All right, we've got a pretty abbreviated evening tonight, so everyone can go back and watch the election results. We're going to start with the invocation that's going to be led by Wes. Is Wes Harding out of the Bridge Church?
No, I do not see Mr. Harding.
Okay, so imagine your office will do that. Tracy, is that right?
Oh, so let me, let me find my notebook.
Why don't we start, shall we start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Jeru?
Uh, no, I can do it.
Okay, let's do it.
All right, ready? "We seek blessings on the tasks before us, bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality." Important tweets, mate.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, Councilwoman Jeru.
All right, please rise and face the flag. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jeru.
Here.
Councilmember, Member Nicol.
Here.
Councilmember Persak.
Here.
Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Here.
And Mayor Boiles.
Here.
Great, you're all here.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, is there anyone in chamber wishing to speak?
No, there's no one in the chamber tonight for public communications.
Okay, thank you, Mona. All right, have you received any public communications, Madam Clerk?
I have not.
Okay, let's go. Well, next up is special presentation led by Fire Chief Donovan, COVID-19 update. Chief, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. I have a slide deck that I'd like to share. I'll go through this quickly, and then it will be available for any questions you may have. This is information that's, as of this afternoon, we received the latest information from the county of Los Angeles. As you can see, the number of cases continue to rise. The United States, we're over 9.2 million cases, 86,190 new cases from yesterday. The death rates, although this is very sad, are increasing, but they're increasing at a substantially lower threshold than we recently had recently in, well, in the past had seen. And I'll talk a little bit about this in a moment. In California, there's an increase of 4,000 cases with 14 deaths. That's a typo, my apologies. And in Los Angeles County, we had an increase of 1,150 cases with 21 deaths. As we drill into this next level in El Segundo, we have a cumulative case rate, 151 cases since COVID started, and adjusted case rate of 12, which means we have 12 of our residents that have, are in the, in the two-week incubation period. What I wanted to share with the community, with you, is a comparison of El Segundo to South Bay cities. And the county of Los Angeles tracks what we call cases and case rate based off of the population. And in that, that third column from the left that shows case rate, El Segundo at the top, we have 151 cases with a case rate of 900. And if you look at our communities that surround us, particularly Hawthorne, Manhattan Beach, further down to Hermosa Beach, our case rate is 900 compared to Hawthorne, which is 2,486, or Hermosa Beach, which is 1,357, or our neighbor to the south, Manhattan Beach, 1,192. What this does is it demonstrates the actions that we're doing here locally in the city of El Segundo are making a difference in terms of stopping the spread. The fact that we got good guidance, support from our community with the wearing of face covers, with social separation from not congregating in closed spaces, all help to slow the spread. Now, I thought this was important to show the community and the council the actions in comparison to our neighboring cities. If we look at the South Bay numbers, because in the last week, we've had an increase in the, in the total number of cases, and this is, as I mentioned earlier, we're seeing a spike in the number of cases. So in El Segundo, our case rate has increased 5.1%. That's because in the last week, we've had seven new cases, based on our population size, that provides a pretty substantial increase in the case rate. But again, in comparison to our neighboring communities, we're really low in our overall case rates from the beginning of tracking COVID-19. The LA County case rate continues to climb, positivity incrementally increasing, and the health metrics is slightly increasing. What these health numbers demonstrate, though, is that we are continuing to be in the tier one or the widespread tier. And we're working closely with LA County, monitoring health metrics and paying close attention to this. But if you'll remember from previous presentations, we have to be below a seven on the adjusted case rate. Hold that for at least three weeks before we are able to be moved into a new tier. And that, that again is, as we've mentioned, going to be a difficult health metrics to meet. We'll continue to work hard, though, with the county and with our efforts here locally to stop the spread. If I could, just talk briefly about some of the good news and some of the things we're doing, and then we can certainly go back. Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back just a bit here. I wanted to talk about the, the number of cases versus death rates. And anecdotally, what we're, what we're finding and what we're hearing from our medical director and from other medical sources is there's an increase in the number of cases, but the death rates are going down or holding in comparison, where before we would see a substantial increase in the number of new cases. And a week or two later, we would have this lag where deaths would go up, and we're not seeing that. And I think what this is pointing to is the advancements in medical care with patients that have COVID-19. Our hospitalization numbers in Los Angeles County remain flat, meaning there's plenty of hospital bed availability. ICU unit availability remains flat, meaning there's plenty of room in our hospitals if we had an uptick in sick patients. And ventilator availability is still readily available, and it's high, which are all great indicators. What this means, again, is that the medical community is learning to more aggressively treat patients with COVID-19. In October 22nd, FDA approved an antiviral medicine called Remdesivir. And this is a positive treatment for people with COVID-19. A cortisone medicine called Dexamethasone is being shown to be effective in treating people with COVID-19. And then we're hearing and learning more about immunotherapies that are helping. And so I think this is going to be important for us to watch the treatment modalities and how the health of our people that are unfortunately impacted by COVID-19, how they fare in terms of the long-term impacts on, on their health and well-being. And we're going to pay very close attention to that and continue to report on, on that. So with that, I wanted to switch quickly to some good news. Efforts that are taking place here, all in compliance with the LA County Public Health Orders. We assisted the LA, with the City Clerk's Office, with a flex voting center for Park Vista residents. My hat's off to the City Clerk's Office for working very hard in public outreach and getting the vote out, specifically as it related to the Park Vista residents, and we were able to do a flex voting center in compliance with the health orders. We've been able to assist the parks with reopening basketball courts for family play, and several youth sports league practice plans have been approved and are being pushed out. Over the weekend, substantial, great things happened as it relates to our community. Our trunk-or-treat event, which took place on Saturday, had over 500 cars participating in that event. The Fire Department gave away 1,200 toy trucks that were donated by Mattel, and close to 2,000 helmets. We had tremendous support from the Rotary and Kiwanis, a great civic engagement. And then, of course, our departments from Recreation, Library, Parks, Police, and Fire were all out there. Lastly, the Great Pumpkin Event, where the Kiwanis with El Segundo Police Department were able to do some great community outreach. And my sense is this may become a new, ongoing event for our community. And so with that, I'll open up for any questions you might have, and thank you for your time.
Okay, Council, any questions? I don't see any hands up. No. Let's see. I think we're good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Formative, appreciate it. All right, next up, we have procedural motions. Consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. And if we could have someone make a motion, state in their last name to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Jeru so moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Madam Clerk, vote, please.
Councilmember Jeru.
Yes.
Councilmember Nicol.
Aye.
Councilmember Persak.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Aye.
And Mayor Boiles.
Yes.
All right, pass this 5-0.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have the consent calendar. And I believe, well, I would like to pull item seven. I'm sure other people might as well. Are there any other pulls? Yeah, the item three, Councilman Nicol. Okay, great. Three and seven, any others? All right, do I have a motion to approve items one, two, four, five, and six?
Jeru so moved.
Nicol's second.
Okay.
There's a stare down there.
That was Jeru at the first and Nicol on the second. Thank you. All right. And Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Sure thing. Councilmember Jeru.
Yes.
Councilmember Nicol.
Aye.
Councilmember Persak.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Aye.
And Mayor Boiles.
Yes.
All right, they passed with the exception of three and seven.
Okay, item three, I'll turn it over to you, Councilman Nicol.
Yeah, I pulled this item for a couple of reasons. One, I wanted to make sure that we recognize the fact that we were going to be using donated money from the L.A. Kings Organization to refurbish this rink. But then I also wanted to bring something to staff's attention. You know, I know Elias, our public works director, was not here when we did the restriping of the roads on El Segundo Boulevard just off of Main Street, basically the first couple eastbound, the eastern portion of El Segundo Boulevard, close to Main Street. I believe it was just the westbound lanes. But the, the company that's bid here for the Pacific Tennis Courts, Inc., it popped out of me because I remember when they were the bid that was awarded to restripe it. I remember Councilmember Pimentel bringing up the point that we were having a tennis court painting company paint the roads and how that was odd. And so I asked the question of staff, is this the same company that did that work? And they said, yes. And so I know myself personally, I was, I wasn't really happy with how that work was completed. And, you know, Elias, prior to you coming on, your predecessor, Mr. Berkman, ended up using some of our staff resources to fix the errors that were made because he felt that it was easier than having the company come back out. So I think that it's, you know, one of our primary purposes here as council members are to be stewards of, you know, our residents' money. And, you know, if here's a company we've worked with before, I just want to make sure that, you know, we get the best work possible and that there's items put into this agreement that make sure that they live up to what they are bidding and that, you know, we hold their hand to the fire, per se.
Yeah, and I think the vendor's on the phone, I forget the gentleman's name, but he spoke up at the beginning of the call. Mr. Sessin, do you want to turn it over to the vendor, or do you want to address Councilman Nicol's question?
I could make a few comments, and then I could turn it over to Mr. Phil Carter, Carter, the president of the Pacific Tennis Court Incorporated. I looked into that, and thank you so much, Councilmember Nicol, for bringing this up. So we had conversation amongst us at the staff level and then with Mr. Carter. I believe this company, their specialty is related to sport projects, such as what is before the City Council tonight. And I believe what they adventure in, in doing so was, was to entertain a strapping project of a roadway, which was really out of their specialty. They adventure doing that, and I believe they, they learned a few lessons, and I'm not sure if they pursue that. It didn't work out too well. But the staff, we checked the references with the work that they had done related to sport-related projects, such as the one that is before you. And, and to that end, we, we were able to get satisfactory rating from the references that were provided to us. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Carter for, for maybe more comments. Mr. Carter, are you on the line?
Yes, sir. Can you guys hear me?
Sure.
Hi, my name's Phil Carter. I'm Pacific Tennis Courts. I do, I, I do apologize for the work that was performed on the street. He's exactly right. That's really not our specialty. That was something that I just kind of got, got myself into. I didn't know that it was as bad as we're talking about. I'm probably guessing that the main problem was up at the Main Street corner, where the main line kept coming up, which was a result of the cars driving on it over and over and over. And that project was sold as a temporary project. So the paint that was used to paint the street was temporary paint. So it was a little, a little bit different. But anyways, I've been building tennis courts for 30 years of my life. I've done nothing but build tennis courts and basketball courts, and roller rinks, and baseball fields, and all that stuff. I've done tons of work for you guys. We did that $400,000, $500,000 retaining wall over at Recreation Park, up against the park lot over there 25, 30 years ago when I was a kid. I apologize for the work on the road. If it did anything bad right now, I'll get out there next week and handle it myself and fix it, whatever needs to be taken care of. The roller rink is a simple little job. We're going to fix the fence, put some new borders up around the wall, and repaint it and put some Kings logos and all that good stuff. It's seriously what we do for a living, and it'll be performed perfect. If you don't, if you have any problems with it, it will be done to your perfection, and I apologize for the striping of the street. That's all I got.
If I may add, if the City Council wish is to go forward with this, and I've shared that with Mr. Carter, he knows that we'll be monitoring this project very closely, and we'll make, we'll make certain that we get the best buck out of what, what we spend. And I'm pretty sure that Mr. Carter knows that already.
Oh, yeah. No, I must, I'm totally understanding of the expectations, and it will be perfect. And the logos will look great. The Kings logos look great. It'll look great, I promise.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Did you want to, Mr. Nicol, did you want to introduce it for?
Oh, I first would just like to say thank you, Mr. Carter, for owning the past work. And, you know, I, I think it takes a very big man to admit when, you know, maybe something was not done properly, and I appreciate that. And we look, I look forward to having that hockey rink, you know, remodeled. I think, I'd be curious to know if, Mr. Sessin, if you know how long that rink has been standing. I want to say it's at least 21 years, but I could be off by a couple.
I'm not 100% sure, but I'm 95%. My dad built it about 30 years ago.
Right. I, I was going to say 30 years. My, my boys are 32, and I remember when they transitioned from the blacktop at Richmond with foam pads to that rink. So it has been a long time. And also, Mr. Carter, good work on that retaining wall. That was built a long time ago. It still looks good.
That was sectioned. That was a tough job. Hey, no, no kidding, guys. Put out a punch for that, that work on the street, and I'll get it fixed.
Okay.
All right, I'll take care of it.
Scott, thank you for, thank you, sir. Scott, thanks for pulling it, and thank you for mentioning the Kings. They've been incredible to our community, great partners, not just this project, the $75,000, but also they hosted the E-DAC Dinner. What was that, Lance, the last one? Can't remember now, it was the last one, on their, the ice there, just incredibly hospitable, really generous to not only inland hockey, but also the city. So, all right, Scott, you want to introduce the approval?
I'm working at Gretzky's house right now, just so you guys know.
Nice.
Yep, yep.
All right, that's a pretty good testimonial.
Yeah, I could actually get him, I could get his wife to call you if you want to talk to her.
No, that's good. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Carter. All right, Scott, you want to introduce the approval?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move to approve item number three on the consent calendar, authorizing public works construction contract with Pacific Tennis Courts, Inc. for the $134,070 for the roller rink improvement project.
Okay, any seconds?
I, I second it, yeah.
All right, not you, Mr. Carter, but thank you. You got to run and get elected first. You got to run and get elected first. All right, Mayor Protem was the second on that. Thank you. And, okay, Madam Clerk, voice vote?
Councilmember Jeru.
Yes.
Councilmember Nicol.
Aye.
Councilmember Persak.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Aye.
And Mayor Boiles.
Yes.
You 5-0.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. All right, and then I pulled item seven. I know we have Jeff Wilson and Lily Craig on the line. And Mr. Mitnick, would you like to introduce item seven for us, provide a little background?
If it's okay with the mayor, members of council, I'd like to hand it off to Barbara Boss, our Deputy City Manager. She did most of the work on it.
Awesome. Barbara.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Mayor Boiles, members of council. I just wanted to say a special thank you to Chevron. We have two grants in front of us this evening. One is for $100,000 to support our economic development program, and the other is an additional, and Chief Donovan will speak to the total amount for the Fire Department. But it's an additional $215,946.5. So for economic development, we have received, this is our eighth grant from Chevron. We are now at a grand total of $1.220 million, and this has been since 2013. And the funds have been used to develop the Where Big Ideas Take Off logo, our business economic development website. And then this year, obviously, 2020, we got derailed to some extent on our economic development efforts, and we shifted gears and went to economic recovery and business resilience, and working with our businesses to adapt and survive during COVID-19. We've had a back-to-business panel discussion with Dr. Xingxiong that Mayor Boiles participated in, and Luke Robitaille, and Mike Mothner, and Rob Crox, so just a mix of industries and business leaders talking about what they were doing within their companies to adapt and change. And I think that was well-received by the greater business community. We have real stories of resilience. We just released Next Trucking, talking about how they are adapting and actually growing during the pandemic. And that went out on the 23rd of October. Our next one coming up is Boston Properties, talking about how they continue to invest and grow in El Segundo, and why El Segundo is a several place for that investment. And I just, we couldn't do any of this without the support of Chevron. So we appreciate very much, and on behalf of Christina Rabelles, our Economic Development Coordinator, who's making all of this happen behind the scenes, we thank you very much, Jeff, and Lily, and all of Chevron, for the support for economic development. It really means a lot, means a lot to the business community and our overall economic development efforts. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Donovan to talk about the other grant that we are receiving this evening.
Thanks, Barbara. Mayor, members of council and the community. You know, we've had an excellent working relationship with Chevron, and what, what we were able to get was an amazing gift. In 2018, Chevron offered to purchase for the city a fire engine that cost $758,720.85, and they were then going to also purchase a pickup truck with some radio equipment. And it was a very generous donation. And that was back in December 2018, when we were made aware of that. And then unfortunately, in September of 2019, if you'll remember, one of our rescue ambulances, a new rescue ambulance caught fire. And we indicated to Chevron that this vehicle caught fire, and that we were going to have to replace it, and in their generosity. And this goes to Rod Spackman, when he was still employed with Chevron, and to Jeff Wilson and Lily Craig. They rallied together and came up with an additional, almost $75,000, to purchase a new rescue ambulance for us. And so all told, Chevron in 2018 donated $974,667 to purchase a new fire engine and a rescue ambulance. So tonight is the portion of the rescue ambulance check for $215,946. It's an amazing donation. It shows incredible support of the Fire Department here. It demonstrates our ongoing, good working relationship and collaboration. And I think it also points out to the City Council's support of the Fire Department, because I just like to bring to your attention that since 2017, we've been able to purchase eight new apparatus, two new fire engines, three new rescue ambulances, a new battalion chief Suburban, a new strike team truck used to take our crews out on strike teams, and a new REMS vehicle. And with Chevron's support and the City Council's support, the Fire Department have the resources they need to do, effectively do the job and to service our community. And we're now in a position for the next eight years where we're not going to need to purchase any apparatus. And, and again, I cannot thank Chevron, I cannot enough, I cannot thank Jeff and Lily for their support. And again, Rod Spackman was instrumental in, in this grant as well. And on behalf of the men and women of the El Segundo Fire Department, who proudly serve our community, this has been an incredible gift. So thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Chief. And Lily and Jeff, would you like to say anything?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and most importantly, members of the community, and Chief Donovan. Chief, both you and Chief Wayland, let's look, you, you have, you lead world-class public safety agencies, and the benefit of all of us, and it's, and we're just, we're thrilled. We have a little opportunity to try to help supplement some of those resources. But again, our partnership with yourselves and our ongoing communication, we want to just continue to work to enhance our transparency, our own response, our own alignment. You know, again, in the interest of public safety. So, Mr. Mayor, again, I just commend your team and your city's leadership to make sure we all remain safe. And on behalf of Chevron, we're thrilled to be able to help that. And for the E-DAC, if we go back and look, Mr. Mayor, you and I And, and for the E-DAC, I, if we go back and look, Mr. Mayor, you and I have talked about this, if you think about the beginning, what, uh, where the E-DAC effort, where the city's economic development, development effort has gone, with so many different business interests that it blossomed to become world-class, you know, leaders in economic development. It's, and it's, again, we've had just a little part, but, uh, what the city's led is, is a model for global success. And again, it's, it's our appreciation back to the city to see this and serve as an incubator. And Barbara, your leadership here, and, you know, leading the way and guiding this, and, you know, we'll have to give a nod to Mr. Kiahie too, because you can never say no to Al when Al comes to your door. But also, just a little bit of a highlight, we don't thank Lily enough, too. You know, Lily's the one that, she's the, she's the North Star for Chevron and the company, helping us do the right thing for the community and be the bridge to, you know, the city leadership in the best interest of what the, what the residents want, so Lily, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us this time to be able to share this good news with you and the community, thank you so much.
I didn't expect you to be that short. Thanks, Lily. Short and sweet. Thank you, thank you both very much. Seriously, we really appreciate it, thank you for being on this evening as well.
Our pleasure, thank you.
Okay, um, see you later, thanks again. Do we have, would someone like to entertain this motion?
First, Carol Prustak. I'll move it.
Motion, okay, thank you.
Nickel, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, do a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Prustak?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimental?
Yes.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
I vote, you pass.
Excellent. All right, we have no public hearings, we have a staff presentation, item eight on the agenda is up next. This is a presentation of the investment portfolio report for September twenty twenty. We have our elected treasurer on, Matthew Robinson. Take it away, please, sir.
All right. I share a screen. All right, is everyone seeing this or no? Probably not. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, we just don't see anything.
Okay. Sorry. I'm trying to... There you go, something's happening. Alrighty. Okay. For some reason, it's still showing it's small, but can you, can, is it big enough, or can people see this, that?
Yeah, I can see it, how's everybody else?
Okay. Um, so, uh, what you're seeing here is the, the portfolio as it, as it was at the end of September. Um, you can see that, um, you know, the majority of our assets are still in LEAF. Uh, there's been very little changes between, over the quarter, um, and that's due to the rate environment as, as well as the fact that we have some pretty big drawdowns, uh, in the third calendar quarter of the year. Um, oh, this presentation will be likely pretty short, because there really hasn't been a whole lot of changes. This is another, uh, visualization of, of, um, uh, what you saw on the previous page, which shows where our assets are. Um, we have about forty-one million dollars of immediate liquidity, which, uh, is obviously good to have in a, in a time of, of uncertainty like this. Um, we've had a few, uh, calls and maturities, which I'll get into in a little bit. But, um, in general, this, this, uh, this has not changed very much over the last quarter. Um, one of the most important things is, are we in compliance, um, with our maximums as CD, as, uh, defined by CDIAC? Um, you can see that, uh, nothing is even particularly close to that maximum, with the exception of the negotiable CDs, or twenty-five percent, uh, versus a maximum of thirty percent. Uh, our, our LEAF maximum is actually seventy-five million dollars, even though it says there's none, there's actually a, a maximum that the, the, um, the state, uh, has, which is seventy-five, that was up from sixty-five at the beginning of the year. But anyway, we're nowhere near that, because we have about thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four million dollars there. Uh, additional compliance, uh, these are medium-term notes, our super nationals, municipal bonds. Uh, for medium-term notes, we need to be A or better. Uh, and for almost every, uh, note that we have, we are A or better, uh, with the exception of Wells Fargo, which, uh, was downgraded, but this is not news to anyone, as, uh, I brought this up in the last council meeting. Uh, here is the interest received, uh, as well as some of the notable changes, uh, throughout the quarter. We had, uh, a couple of calls, um, in July, August, and September, about four point two-four-five million of calls. We had some maturities come off of both, both CDs and medium-term notes. Uh, and then we had, uh, about four hundred and fifty thousand of interest, uh, that we received. And, uh, as a percentage of the full invested amount of the portfolio, that's about two percent, which is obviously significantly above, uh, what the going rates are. Uh, but that is, um, due in, in large part to, to the, um, treasury before I came in, uh, in an environment where you could get those kinds of interest rates. Here's how our investments look by maturity date. Um, anything that's light blue here, uh, is gonna be, you know, is gonna be maturing in the next year, or potentially even, uh, immediate liquidity, which would be LEAF, cash, cash equivalent camp. Uh, so you can see that we have quite a bit of immediate liquidity. Uh, and if you go out, uh, we're pretty well, um, diversified across, uh, one to two, two to three, three to four years, uh, and just a, a very small amount in four to five years. Uh, and once, uh, rates get better, and, uh, once kind of LEAF gets back into competition with what we're seeing, uh, we'll likely resume kind of filling those buckets of the ladder. Rolling twelve, rolling thirteen-month cash flow analysis, uh, this is kind of, obviously, a, a, a big, the, the thing that stands out here is gonna be July, in terms of the last quarter. Um, and that obviously has to do with, uh, some very large pension payments, uh, for, uh, unfunded accrued liabilities. Um, and so thi- this quarter is, is typically pretty net negative for us, which you can see in this, which is, uh, this year compared with the prior two years, uh, the last three, the last, uh, thirteen months. So, uh, you can see we always have a pretty big dip there in July. Uh, this one was a little bit more pronounced, uh, but the month before it was a little bit better. I think that that's kind of just a, um, a difference, and obviously, things are a little bit worse this year, uh, and it could be just a cash flow timing issue. In terms of LEAF, uh, which I feel is worth digging into, because that's where mu- mu- much of the, um, portfolio is, uh, you can see that that, the, the daily rate has been on a steady decline. Um, and, uh, the average maturity has been on a steady decline, except for in all, in, in September, you can see that there, there's been some purchases, because they've extended out their average maturity. So, uh, they've started to invest again, um, albeit, uh, pretty typically. Here's the apportionment rate, which is actually what we earn when we put money into LEAF. Uh, it had just started to go up at the end of two thousand and nineteen, just to come back down. Um, hopefully, it goes down slow, but it doesn't seem like it is, uh, but I wouldn't expect it to hold up for very much longer. Um, I've mentioned before that LEAF is primarily invested in treasuries, so despite the fact that our portfolio as a whole doesn't appear to have any treasuries, since half of LEAF is in treasuries, um, that puts us, uh, you know, a little bit more exposed to treasuries than you would otherwise think, which is a good diversifier for us. Uh, if you look at the monthly yield comp- comparison, um, at the bottom there, you can see that it's significantly higher than, uh, the S and P, uh, government investment pool benchmark, as well as the Fed funds rate. So, uh, it's certainly a good investment for us still. Economic, economic environment, um, you, the treasury yield curve, you can see, obviously, is much different than the end of last year. If you look at, uh, the end of, uh, June compared to the end of September, you can see, see things have not changed very much. In fact, uh, rates have got even lower, uh, yield curve is still, you know, roughly the same slope, uh, it is upward sloping. Uh, here is the ten-year minus the three-month, which is, uh, generally what a lot of people see as a recession indicator, as well as a, a, um, I guess a gauge for how the economy and, and how people feel about the economy. Um, and that, you know, the lower it, the lower it is, the worse, um, and so we're obviously at a pretty low point right now. But things are starting to take up, and it's becoming a little bit more, um, positively sloped. Uh, unemployment, obviously, everyone knows there's a big spike, uh, it's starting to come back down. Uh, the long-run target is, uh, between five and six percent, and still a way to go. And as you can see from the prior recession, it, it typically takes a while to come down. And, um, there's no reason to believe that it, it, it will come down that slowly, um, once things start to normalize. Realized inflation, uh, is, you know, about one and a half percent. And as, as of the last reading of this, and the long-term goal is somewhere around two percent, so a little lower than the long-term per, per, uh, Fed. Uh, here's a five-year breakeven inflation prediction, so this is kind of what the market thinks of inflation's gonna be over the next five years, which is about one and a half percent. Uh, and if you remember what the yield curve looked like, that means that we have negative real rates, so, uh, we're essentially paying to, to buy these, these bonds at the moment. Uh, and one of the last things I will show, uh, in what is a very brief presentation, is, uh, the options that we have, just to kind of give you, you know, what we're looking at as of yesterday. Um, so, these are all of the options, or it's not all of them, but this is a sample that we get from some of our brokers. Uh, this is purchase yield, so the yield that we can expect on the Y-axis with the effective duration or the maturity, uh, on the X-axis. You can see LEAF over here, um, is, you know, still pretty bit, pretty high above the pack in terms of comparable durations. But as I mentioned earlier, many of these other good options are non, are, are callable, are callable, um, bonds, which essentially means, you know, you could sit there and say, oh, well, why don't we just go and, and buy this four-year bond that yields one and a half percent, or one, one point two percent, because rates, rates could go down, and, uh, you know, we should lock that in, because you never know. Uh, well, if rates do go down, then that's gonna get called, so realistically, that's, that's not necessarily, uh, something that we can really lock in. Here's the reserve portfolio, ladder by quarter, this is something we saw earlier, it's somewhat of an appendix, uh, just kind of shows how we're diversified across different maturities. And then, um, kind of the last thing I thought I would add is some of the goals that I have for, you know, the upcoming quarter or upcoming year. Uh, I'd like to normalize our data input procedures, so that, um, I can build visualizations and build forecasts around them. I'd like to develop somewhat of a uni- u- user-assisted cash flow projection, uh, that's based on known anticipated credits and debits, just so that, um, we can kind of know when things are coming, and essentially, uh, try and, you know, line up our, our assets with our liabilities a bit better. Uh, also like to try and overhaul some of our accounting and visualization tools that we have, um, for, um, you know, the way we process banking custodian statements. Um, and then, uh, the very last thing is, depending on kind of, I know we have a POV decision on the docket, or at least we're, we're beginning discussions there, uh, depending on how that goes, and, and, uh, I, I'd like to, to look at the usage of the Par Stabilization Trust as somewhat of a diversifier. Also will simplify things on the treasury side, and, uh, also, um, ideally, it would be a better source of long-run returns. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the treasurer? Or comments? No? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it, Mr. Robinson. Okay, next up, we have item nine. Oh, I'm sorry. No, we don't need to, do we need to vote on receiving and filing that? That was just an informational thing, correct? Yes, okay. Item nine, implementation of reorganization of city departments, including change in the names of the library, recreation and park, planning and building safety, and information services departments, establishing and deleting certain job classifications, and establishing and modifying salary ranges of, for certain positions in various city departments. Mr. Mitnick, who will report on this?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I will do that, and I will guarantee I will be shorter than the previous speaker. I may not be as riveting or as interesting, but I will, I'll do my best. This item is, uh, ax- asking city council to approve a resolution and an ordinance, which will implement the reorganization of various departments that city council provided the funding for when you adopted the fiscal year budget a, a couple of months back. Uh, I won't go into all the details, just know that what this, uh, these actions will do, if you are, if you are in concurrence, is it will establish a new community services department, and that really is simply the merger of the library, the, the former library department and the rec and parks departments. We're being more efficient with the taxpayers' money, merging those two departments into one. At, as we've explained to you before, that's become a, um, a trend in California municipalities. The development services department, that's a name change, um, only. Uh, there are, um, in that department, uh, well, not just a name change only, it will also involve the housing, uh, the establishment of a housing division, and the oversight over Park Vista will shift from what was Rec and Park over to that department. The finance department, consolidated functions, uh, bringing together the city treasurer's office and the, the finance department into one department. The city treasurer, uh, who just gave you a report, he will remain the elected treasurer through the end of this term. And also, we're, um, recommending, and the council had provided the funding for, to establish a risk management function to move the, I mean, before risk management, which is workers' comp and, um, um, general liability operations, it was in two departments, HR and finance. It makes more sense to put in one department and establish one position, a risk manager, to, um, to oversee that. The information, uh, services or information systems department will switch to being, um, a information technology services department, an IT department, uh, name change only with that. Public Works Department, consolidated functions, what used to be parks maintenance or landscaping maintenance, which was part of rec and park, that will now become part of the Public Works Department. And that's a, a, a real benefit for us, because those functions that were, that all operate out of the service center will now be part of one department. With respect to positions, I mentioned risk manager, that's a new position, that is a, a gain in the, um, uh, net, uh, new headcount. However, that will be offset by the savings that we'll have, uh, throughout the city due to the, um, the new position. Council, as we've shared with you before on that, if we don't have savings from that, we'll have to revisit the, the value and the virtue of that position, but we're very confident we're going to drive down costs. The library services manager position, this is a reclassification from a senior librarian with the establishment of the community services department. That will, that department will have two divisions, and, uh, with the library director becoming the director of the department, we're recommending reclassifying the senior librarian into a library services manager to oversee the library division. Director of community, um, services, uh, so as I mentioned, there'll be a new director, so we need to have approval for that position. And then finally, a new cultural arts coordinator, that's reclassifying a vacant librarian one position. Council will recall, you approved about a year ago, establishing a, a one percent, um, for the arts, uh, fee, uh, and luffy for, for art, or, or an art project on, on, on private development, on commercial industrial office development. Uh, so this person will, um, oversee that effort. And there are a number of positions that would be deleted, library, uh, director, rec and park director, director of finance, that's becoming a, a chief financial officer, a position which I'll, I'll talk about in a moment. Uh, and some other positions are being deleted. As far as modified positions, I mentioned the chief financial officer, Joe Lilly, his title's changing, I've changed the salary. Director of Development Services, that's a name change only from previously, um, um, planning and, um, and building safety director, that will become Director of Development Services. The IT director, just reflecting the, the new, the department title. Deputy city manager, we are, um, we have made some changes to the job description to more accurately, um, cover the responsibilities, the increased responsibilities of, of the deputy city manager. We are recommending a, a, a range, uh, or change in the salary range, keeping the low part of the range, but increasing the high part to, to match the other non-public safety department heads. It's a logical, um, uh, change, and we're recommending that. The planning positioner position, that's vacant, we're recommending changing that from civil service to at-will. And in the, uh, finance department, what used to be a business services manager position, we're recommending a, a name change in the title, uh, no change in compensation. The new title will be treasury and customer services manager. That will more accurately, accurately reflects the responsibilities of, of that position. That's it, so if you're, if you concur... That's it. So if you're, you concur, then we need, we do need authorization to change the applicable resolution and modify the municipal code. The municipal code will come back, it'll be a first reading introduction and waiver of the first reading. And then the second reading will take place at the next meeting, November 17th. If you do that, then it will go into effect 30 days later, approximately December 17th. Thank you. And staff's available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mitnick. Any questions for staff? Doesn't look like it. Okay. So we are going to, first we will have Mr. Hensley, the city attorney, read the resolution by title only, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council, a resolution establishing basic monthly salary ranges for various job classifications is ready for adoption.
All right. And then we'll do, we need a first and a second on this.
Correct. This is for a vote tonight.
Yes. So. Anyone?
Jerus, I moved.
Thank you, sir.
Pimentel, second.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, voice vote, please.
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstuck?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution passes by vote.
Great. Thank you. All right. Mr. Henley, would you read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, this is for introduction this evening, as the city manager noted, and it would be, if it's introduced tonight, it'll be brought back at your November 17th meeting for a vote. An ordinance amending the El Segundo municipal code to reflect changes to the city's internal organization, including revised names of certain departments and classifications.
Okay. Who would like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Councilman Nichol. All right. So we, second reading and possible adoption, as Mark said, will be scheduled for November 17th, 2020. Excellent. All right. We are on to reports. City clerk.
Yes. Actually, I just want to give a big shout out to the staff and everyone that really came together and help us, helped us get our voting centers up and working and it, it was just a tremendous help by all that, that work here in the city and it's a, it's, it's an, it was amazing. And I feel proud to, to be the city clerk in this city. They did a great job. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Mr. Treasurer. Anything this evening? No? Okay. Set enough, huh? Right. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Jeru.
Uh, yes, I want to share with council that I attended my first road, reach out against drugs, Zoom meeting this past week. And I just want to give props to our, there's three ASB students from the high school that were there who essentially kind of ran the meeting very professionally, by the way, I just wanted to recognize them. Tiffany Tan, Sophia Early and Nicholas Pita. It's, it's very encouraging to see the young leaders stepping up and taking control of these things. As also just to report as part of red, red ribbon week on October 24th, El Segundo was one of, one of only three sites chosen for the prescription takeback program run by the DEA. And the El Segundo event itself resulted in between 500 to 600 pounds of discarded medications being collected to be, to be disposed of safely. So a very good event. And that's what I had from last week.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks for the update. All right. Councilmember Nichol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, the Hyperion meeting happened last week. I believe the Mr. Mitnick shared with all of you the slide deck that was presented there. I suggest all of you review it. There's some stuff coming down the pipeline. They're starting to discuss the the construction or the potential construction of the recycled water portion that Mayor Garcetti had that big announcement. It was about a year and a half ago. Mr. Mayor, I think you were at, you and Ms. Persek were actually there at that announcement. And so they're beginning to discuss that. And I'm sure we're going to start seeing an environmental document and so on and so forth as time goes on. But it's something important that I think all of us should be aware of, that's coming down the pipeline so that our residents can be made aware of some of the details of how some of those digestors are going to be changed out with some recycled water machinery. We also have the Park Vista Subcommittee met. They are presenting to us on the 17th. So I, I hope all of, all of our residents that are tuned in now will tune in then and see. They're going to give us a financial report and come to us with a few recommendations on some changes that could be made there at Park Vista. So that's important to know. And then I just wanted to say thank you again to all the men and women who volunteered for Qantas Rotary Women's Club. I know the slide earlier said that the Great Pumpkin was Qantas and Police Officers Association, but Rotary participated, the Women's Club participated. It was really the first time in a long time that all of the community groups collaborated together on, on an event. And it was just a wonderful touch. It's everything that El Segundo stands for. And I just want to thank all of those men and women that put their heads together and brought that to life. And that's all I have for you tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I heard great things about that event and the trunk or treat. So good stuff. Thank you, Councilman Nichol. All right. Next up is Councilmember Perstuck.
Yeah. So I just want to thank all the clubs once again, as Scott Nichol mentioned, it was great. I was able to pass out a lot of candy at the trunk or treat with the fire department and it was just a great, it was great fun to see people and kids being engaged in a safe manner. And we're just happy that we could still bring Halloween to El Segundo. So thank you to all the clubs that participated and everybody that donated the candy and donated their time. It was really a community event. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Perstuck. Mayor Proten, Pimentel.
Mr. Mayor, just that there have been a variety of initiatives going on regionally and with all the contract cities on trying to guide some of the land use legislation a, as it comes down in the spring, some of those we will see probably some presentations that will go to this council, just so that, to keep abreast of what some of those initiatives are, as we place them to our assembly persons and our state senators, our assemblywoman is vying for reelection as we speak. Our senator is not. It's a free pass this time. But those are things that the, the concept, both in the cog, as well as the contract cities are to make sure that we have things that people and our legislators can say yes to, as opposed to things that we're continually telling them to say no to. But I suspect you may have more to say about that. But other than that, nothing further as sanitation and transportation are next week, my favorite topics. So I'll have more of that.
All right. Thank you, sir. First up, we had an interesting Southern Cal Association of Government meeting on emerging technology. I'm on the emerging technology committee. Ontario presented something that I'd never heard of before. They basically rolled out broadband years ago. And they actually now offer that as a utility service to their residents and businesses. So I know that's something we've contemplated in El Segundo off and on. Really interesting presentation and the SCAG committee was not aware of the South Bay Fiber Ring project that we were able to secure, where we basically lit up the entire South Bay, including El Segundo with our data centers, incredibly great project for us and it was paid for by Metro Funds. And so we made them aware of that and offered to share information there. We, Mayor Proten mentioned housing legislation. He's been really instrumental in working with the contract cities committee on housing legislation. I jumped on a call this week that Chris was on as well, laying out a couple of different options that, to see if we can't get a legislator to carry some practical housing bills that can actually work for the cities and give the cities a flexible, flexibility they need without affecting and undermining local control. So more to come on that, like Chris said. The local travel network. So this is something that the COGS been championing for quite some time. So think of electric bikes, bikes, sharos, electric golf carts and the like, and creating a network connecting the entire South Bay for that purpose. So people could safely drive their golf carts. Obviously we have great adoption of technologies like that in El Segundo. It became really clear when you looked at the map, what's the one city that's on an island? Well, there's not just one, angle would cut it as two, but us, where there's the refinery between us and Manhattan Beach. And so that was a discussion point. There's going to be more information on that. And that group is just looking to make it even more accessible and to create some kind of opportunities to encourage people to buy and use cleaner burning vehicles in closer proximity. I know like, I think everyone in council has, and a lot of us have electric vehicles. So it's great. And then I think Chris alluded to this too. We had a good meeting with Assemblymember Burke to share our concerns, the city as it relate to housing and some of the other things that the legislature is contemplating. And we also talked about SB 54, the plastics bill that Senator Ben Allen had sponsored. And, because I think she's a pretty vocal opponent. So we got our perspective on that. That was enlightening. And that's all I have to report this evening. And thanks for everyone else's reports. Mark Hensley, city attorney, anything to report?
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mitnick, anything to follow up on?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, nothing to follow up on. The next council meeting will be on November 17th. We're still putting that, that agenda together. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I just want to compliment the city staff who worked, who continue to work really hard on the COVID-19 effort and all the staff that worked hard to make Halloween a little extra special for the community and for the children. And we saw it all, all over. There were comments made moments ago about it, but I just want, I wish I could read off all the names of the people who went the extra mile. But one thing everybody in the community saw, or they should have seen if they didn't, was the water tower and how it was lit up orange for, for Halloween. And also for baseball fans, when the, for the final game there, it was lit up blue for the Dodgers. So those little quality of life things that your employees do at all levels, I just want to call out to our employees and simply say thank you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't let the community know how awesome they are under these trying circumstances. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. That's all we have. We're going to adjourn at 7:01 PM so people can go up to results. Thank you.